I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 12 meeting. And as we begin, I'd like to announce some of our distinguished guests. But let me tell you, you all are distinguished in some way. But these are the people that hold offices. So Roland Winters, Jr., who is a council member and surprise. Roland, just wave your hand up there. Thank you. Ken Remley, council member, surprise. There you are. Okay, I looked for you. I didn't see you. Bill Arnold, the former mayor of Goodyear, and his wife, Joey. Nice to have you here. Michelle Hess, council member Buckeye. I'm so sorry we have you all the way back there. I think I can see you around there. And then John Safin, who is the Southwest Chamber of Commerce president. John, thank you all for being here. We are all at the diocese tonight. Thank you for all being here. Nobody missed it. Great. We will now have the presentation of colors led by the Goodyear Fire and Police Honor Guard.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder, please place your cell phones to vibrate or off. At this time, please stand, remove your hats, remain standing for the presentation of the colors by the Goodyear Fire Police Honor Guard, the Pledge of Allegiance, National Anthem, and invocation. Mayor Lord will now start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Tara Powell will now sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
At this time, Pastor Haney with the King of Kings Church will now give the invocation.
Would you pray with me? God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Holy Scripture tells us that you are the giver of every good and perfect gift. We thank you for how generous you have been to us and to our city. We love her. We are grateful for how kind you have been. We can scarcely appreciate your many gifts. We think of the beautiful sunsets, the breathtaking mountains. We think about the physical security that we enjoy. We thank you for the protection that we receive with the police and fire departments. We thank you for the economic security that we enjoy in this place and how generous you have been to us. We thank you for our children and our families and the opportunities that we have that are present in this place. We thank you, Lord, for our many freedoms. And in particular, this evening, we thank you for the government that seeks to order fares for our well-being. Our God, not only do we give you thanks this evening, but we also present to you a simple request. We pray, God, that you would give us wisdom. Of course, we desire this for all of the citizens of Goodyear and beyond, but in particular, we think now of our elected officials, of our mayor, our soon-to-be vice mayor, our council members. We ask, God, that you would give them wisdom. We ask that you would give them wisdom that we might steward well these varied and numerous gifts that you've given to us, that these gifts would not simply be for our comfort or ease or enjoyment, but instead that we would steward them with wisdom so that we might honor you and love our neighbor, our fellow man. God be pleased to answer this prayer, for we ask it together in the name of the mediator, crucified, now risen, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mayor Lord.
All right, council, we're on communications, and we have no communications tonight. There being no further business to be brought before this council, I declare this council meeting be adjourned. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to our city clerk.
Mayor Lord and council members, we will now have the swearing-in of our new council members. I will perform the oath of office for Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pazillo, and Councilmember Hampton. Councilmember Campbell will have a family member perform the oath of office. I will call each person by name to come to the podium and take their oath. Each one will have an opportunity to speak. Mayor Lord will be first, Councilmember Pazillo will be second, Councilmember Campbell will be third, and Councilmember Hampton will be fourth. So I would like to have Mayor Lord come down, please. Please repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Georgia Lord.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I use, I really prefer that. Well, thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome. It's not on. Anytime I touch electronics, whether it's the computer, the telephone, anything, that's what happens. So just bear with me. It just seems to follow me around like a black cloud. So good evening again, and thank you all for joining me. You know, as I look at this audience, it's heartwarming for me to see so many people who contributed to my campaign in different ways. And now you are here sharing this proud moment for me tonight. I thank you. I thank you so much for all your efforts and the support you have given me during the election. I only hope that I will have the opportunity tonight to give you a hug and personally thank you. I do need to publicly announce and recognize one person, although she's not here tonight. But you know what government's like, and you know how many papers people have to fill in with the government. Well, my treasurer, Del Morgani, was my treasurer for this entire time. And so I have to thank her, first of all, holding me by my ear to get things in when I needed to, and then filling all that paperwork out. So I'm going to give her a round of applause, even though she's not here tonight. And I'll never forget our police unions and our fire unions. Thank you so much for everything that you did for me and some of the other candidates. And lastly, but always first in my life, sometimes he doesn't think so. I'm not always a pleasant person to live with, you know. But my husband of 53 years, I knew you'd giggle at this, especially after today, for supporting me in all my endeavors, but especially my politics. You know, he was in the military for 30 years, and I followed him around. But it wasn't quite as political as my life is. So darling, I love you and thank you so much. Can you believe it? We've been here since 2005. Well, we've been here since one earlier, but we've been here 19 years, but it was when I got involved in this job. So to my council members, I'd like to begin by congratulating Councilmember Campbell and Pazillo in their reelection, and Councilman Hampton, where are you? All right, for his victory. Brandon, I'm going to welcome you from here to the diocese, which are not going to come up, but I want to welcome you to our city council. And I am really confident that you will find this body collaborative, cooperative, thoughtful, and respectful, even in times of disagreement, right?
Right.
And as I begin my final term as a mayor, I'm reflective of all that we, as a team, have accomplished in the service of our great city. And I am so grateful to continue to have the opportunity to serve alongside you. And I'm also grateful for each member of this council for their unique perspectives, their experiences, and their contributions to the city progress. And I am thankful for the dedicated city staff, you're in the back, I see you, who are committed to success, especially our outstanding city manager, and our dedicated team of department leaders. Raise your hand, department leaders that are here. Oh, come on now. Together in partnership with our private sector counterparts, we have made exceptional, I mean exceptional strides in realizing our shared vision for a successful Goodyear. Lastly, I would be remiss if I did not recognize the wonderful contributions of you, the citizens. Your service on our boards, on our commissions, on our committees, your generosity with both your time and talents through the city's volunteer program have made all the difference. Thank you. Thank you for your active participation in shaping our city's future and for all that you do to support and foster a true sense of a community in Goodyear. Now, we should all be very excited about what we have achieved together in the recent years, and we should be equally excited about the promising future ahead of us. Projects like the master plan for the Goodyear Community Health Park along Interstate I-10, and a design for a recreational center and aquatic facility that all the Goodyear residents will appreciate for their wellness and in their engagement in recreation amenities. They've desired that. They've told us over and over again. And additionally, our commitment to keeping Goodyear safe through an investment of our police and fire departments should be celebrated. Our state-of-the-art police operation facility and the recent addition of the new police squad, coupled with our plans to construct two new fire stations throughout the city, well, it demonstrates the city's commitment. Further, our recently announced partnership with Salt River Project to bring surface water to Goodyear will allow the city to continue its growth and develop in a responsible and suitable manner. This thoughtful planning does not go unnoticed by businesses looking to locate and expand in our city, as evidenced by the recent UPS announcement about its major investment in Goodyear, which will bring nearly a million square feet of operational space and 1,500 jobs to Goodyear. I'll put it this way, that's 1,500 jobs to Goodyear. These accomplishments are the result of a true commitment to our shared vision and the sincere desire of the city council and the staff to serve in this exceptional community. I'll tell you, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Goodyear, whoops, whoops, for over 12 years. And I'm sorry, and I look forward to continuing this service in lockstep with my outstanding council in the years to come. Oh, my goodness. And I most humbly thank you.
Please repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Joe Pazillo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of council member.
As council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
First, none of this would happen without the family. Those long nights of campaigning, going door to door, the many meetings we go outside. So first, I give all thanks to my family. Second, I want to thank all of you who have supported me in this endeavor. I see a lot of you out in the audience, and I'd call out my name, but I know I'd miss somebody, so I don't want to try to do that. But you know who you are. You've been very helpful. This is my third and last term serving as your city council member. So again, I want to thank you. This is the third rodeo, so I really appreciate all that support. First of all, I'm very proud of our successes of the past, and I look forward to the bright future. Like anything else, I emphasize "our," like the mayor had mentioned. Nothing gets done without consensus here, because it requires a minimum of four votes, no matter who presents the idea. So I've been very fortunate and proud to work with this council, because even as the mayor had mentioned, we don't always agree, but it's always professional. We vet our ideas, and sometimes they go across, sometimes they don't. But the organization, the group we have out there, I couldn't ask for a better group to work with. Second, when it comes to some of our things in the past that I'm very proud of financially, I remember when we first started, we were in the middle of a recession. Finances didn't look the greatest in the world. Now we have very strong financial policies. We have replacement equipment, various things that we're doing in the city that makes this foundation very financially sound, while meeting the public safety needs of our community. As the mayor had mentioned, we got on the board two new fire stations planned as a result of our growth. We're constantly receiving feedback from our citizens, because I think what's most important is not only that we provide quality service, that we provide the service that our citizens want, and that's very, very important, the service they want at a very, very high level, and we should routinely check that, which we do through our surveys to make sure that is what is happening. I will continue to focus and provide those community services that are requested. Also, I will continue to work to bring amenities to the city. I hear that all the time when I'm out there in the public, a little more restaurants, a little more retail, all right, more and more things for people to do, especially for young families, more recreational opportunities. In fact, it was, I believe, last council member, last council meeting, we actually took some action to try to create some incentives to try to spur some of that on, okay? So our dollars aren't leaving the city, they're actually staying here. You know, it's been an honor to serve this community. Anybody knows me knows I love this community, and it's been a great honor to serve. And I still want to continue making this a great place to work and raise our family, and hopefully we have the jobs to keep those bases here. I'll match our community up to anybody. And I say "community" because we're just not a collection of neighbors, neighborhoods. If you look at our community, and whenever we need something done, our volunteers are invaluable, over 30,000 hours a year, saving us well over half a million dollars a year, because they step up when we ask, whether it's a committee need or whether it's just working at the ballpark or even working at City Hall as volunteers, they step up. So I always say, corny maybe, tip it a hat to our volunteers. They would make this is great. Thank you.
Repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
I, Wally Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of council member.
Discharge the duties of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, I'm short, so I don't go behind this very often. I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight. Sorry, mayor.
Oh, I don't object to that.
Okay. All right, I'll be very careful with this one. When my husband, John, and I moved to Goodyear in 2000, we moved here because it was only 18,000, a little over 18,000 people, and we thought, what a wonderful, small town. Even though we're 79,000 now, we're still a wonderful, small town. We're a very loving city, we're a very forward-thinking city, and we're very fortunate to be here at this time in our life, and we do appreciate that. I want to thank all of you who have helped me get to where I am. It's taken a long time, and this is my second four-year term that I will be starting tonight. And I would like to thank all of you who voted and supported me for that. I want you to know that without the wonderful employees of this city, we would not be as successful as we are. It not only takes our council, but it takes every one of our employees who do the wonderful customer service to everyone that they meet. It's because they are the face of our city. As council members, we are raised to this position only for a short time, and we have to always remember it's going to come where we come back into the ranks of being just a resident. So while we have a lot of responsibilities, and we take them very seriously, I really appreciate my family not wanting me home every night, cooking dinner, although I do try at least two nights a week. I know I'm not there on the weekends, because you have so many responsibilities as a council member. You have 79,000 bosses who love to have you at every function. They want to see you out, they want to talk to you, and you want to be very accessible to them. While we like to make them think we can solve all their problems, we really can't, but we can give them our time and we can listen to them, and that's what's important. And that's what makes us so successful, because this city is not afraid to step out and do something different, to be innovative, to be open to suggestions, and to listen to the people. Because I didn't start here six years ago as someone who had desired to be on the committee, I mean, on the council. It just happened, and I was just a volunteer like so many other people. But I got to know Goodyear, and it's just such a wonderful, wonderful place to live. And if all of you will help us, we will continue to be successful. We will continue to move our city ahead, no matter how large we get. Of course, we need a lot more rooftops, and we need a lot more money, but we're working on it. We're very happy that we're going to start two new fire stations, because that has been so desperately needed. We're doing our pickleball courts, we're doing softball fields. We're trying to make this city really a jewel in the West Valley. So I want to thank all of you for your help, your support, for your walking precincts for me, your phone calls, everything you've done to help me get where I am. I have not forgotten that it's you that put me here. So thank you all very much.
Please raise your right hand, and you can put your left hand on the Bible. Please repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Brandon Hampton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm humbled and extremely grateful for the opportunity that the Goodyear residents have bestowed on me. It's a very humbling experience, and I appreciate everybody that came out to support and be part of the process. I want to thank my wife. She's been very supportive, encouraging, and there for me the entire time. Thank you for her and everything she continues to do. So also for my family who are here, I got my parents and grandparents and friends and family here, and also my children. They've been knocking on doors like crazy with me, so it's been, I think they got wore out after a while. I think the only reason they knock on doors with me in the future is if there was a park and a restaurant involved, I think. But they're, yeah, it was fun having them there and knocking on doors with me. People are a lot more receptive to when children are at their door as opposed to a person like me. So, yeah, so, yeah, very good experience, I think, yeah, a great time for them. And also I want to thank my mentors and other people in the community that have encouraged me along the way. I'd like to thank the police and fire unions for their support, meant a lot as well. And then also for just the residents as a whole, it was a great opportunity to meet them throughout the process. And talking about the process, like I said, met a lot of residents, a lot of great people in Goodyear. I've been here, I mean, since high school and then some, so to see the growth in the city and to see how much, I mean, just great, more and more people are coming that want to be involved and volunteer and help the city keep getting better and better. So, and like I said, the experience, it was the election process was very positive, and I just wanted to thank or applaud Sarah and Jason, who are also part of the process, and their... and their time in the process, and I just look forward to them being, continuing to be part of the community and invested in the community as we all keep making Goodyear better and better. So thank you for them. And I also wanted to take the time to applaud Cheryl and Holman for her huge, I mean, her dedication and service with the council for the last four years, and also her last 30 to 40 years as being a fixture in the Southwest Valley. So I just want to applaud her for her efforts, and I know she's going to continue to be a part of the community, and I'll be, might be picking her brain to ask her about her experiences and how I can help move the valley, or at least Goodyear, forward. So thank you. And then the future of Goodyear, I mean, the future's bright for Goodyear. I am ecstatic to be part of the council at this time in our history. There's so, we're poised for so much growth and opportunities. And like I talked about during my campaign trail, I still probably am focusing on economic development and fiscal stewardship, and also just the public safety and the basics, and also the quality of life. I think with the parks and everything that are coming in and the amenities that are keep, continue to come in, I'm excited to be a part of that and provide the quality, high quality of life that residents expect and they want in their communities. So with that, I also look forward to serving with the, for the staff. We have a great city staff, and I look forward to working, being a part of the team of the council. It's, I'm looking forward to collaborating and working together, like so many had already mentioned, it's a team effort, and not one person's effort can make a difference in the city. So it's a team sport, and I look forward to being part of a great team. So thank you. And yeah, so with that, I appreciate everybody coming out. Once again, thank you for the residents that put me in this spot. I appreciate it, I take humbly accept it, and I look forward to working for you. And I look forward to the future and making Goodyear a place where we can continue to live, work, and play. So with that, thank you.
All right, now I would like to call the new council to order. Councilman Holman, will you please step down from the dais? And Councilman Hampton, will you please take your seat on the dais? We have one item on business tonight, and that is to recommend a name for the vice mayor. I would like to ask for a motion to elect a vice mayor. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, we need to do a roll call vote for the new council.
All right. Thank you for reminding that. All right, with the new councilman aboard, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Pastor Seven Zero?
All right, I'll proceed. We have one item on the business tonight, and that is to recommend the name for vice mayor. I would like to ask for a motion and a second to elect a vice mayor. Do I hear a motion?
Your honor, I would like to move Wally Campbell as the next vice mayor, and I do so as part of my motion, because she is an absolutely wonderful ambassador for the city within our city, within our state, and with all of her, at the national level, with the National League of Cities. She is truly a person who gets, you hear the saying that if you want something done, go to the busiest person in the room. She clearly gets everything done, so I would be moving Wally Campbell as our new vice mayor.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a second by Councilman Pizzillo. All right, are there any speaker cards related to this position? All right. So with that, I'm going to open this for council discussion.
I guess I should have saved my comments, sorry. I should have saved my comments, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, that's all right. I'll forgive you tonight. I cried, so you're... So, okay, any discussion? All right, then let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Wally, congratulations. Now, once again, council, you're going to move your seats. So is the city clerk going to help everybody get in position? Yeah, we don't have any help here yet.
Oh, wow, it's low. Let's have some teamwork there, come on. Oh my gosh. Thank you, Joe.
All right, council, now that you know where you're supposed to sit now, right, Brandon? Okay, so we got that all settled. Now that you're all in place, I would like to invite the West Valley Orchestra to play "God Bless America." Thank you. All right, council, does council have any comments, commendations, reports, or current events you'd like to do tonight? Pardon me, I am going to thank them.
No, me.
Oh, why don't I just go through this? All right, go ahead, you have the floor.
I would just like to thank council for electing me vice mayor, and I'll do my best to follow the mayor around and be her gopher.
Oh. I'm going to use you for a replacement once in a while, too, you know.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? All right, does the city manager have any reports?
No, mayor and council, not at this time.
Is there any staff summary follow-up?
No, mayor.
Thank you. Does the council have any inquiries? All right, and lastly, is there anything you would like on a future agenda? All right, before I say the thank yous, I just want you to know the future meeting will be on the 26th. It'll be a work session at 5:00, and at 5:30 will be a CFD meeting, and then at 6:00 o'clock will be the regular meeting. So before I adjourn this, it takes a lot to put this together, and we ask a lot of people to help us, and it always is such a joy when our orchestra comes. And I want to thank the conductor, Claire Gordon, and the West Valley Youth Orchestra for coming out tonight and playing for us. Claire, you are doing so much for our youth. Playing an instrument is really so important. It helps them with academics, it helps them with their emotional side, it's just a wonderful thing. And every year, I know some of them are newer, they move on to the other, and we find that you're able to do this each time, and it's so greatly, it's becoming a tradition here, at least since I've been on as mayor, you have come to the city. So I really appreciate, once again, thank you. And Tara, stand up. I'm telling you, when you say you can sing the anthem, you're not kidding. That was wonderful. And then I, thank you very much. And then I'd like to thank Pastor, and they told, my pastor said to call you Pastor Josh, but it's Pastor Honey. And so please stand. This is a new church in Goody, well, not so new, they've been here in Goodyear a year, but they've built a beautiful, beautiful church that's located on Litchfield Park, right across from, in Litchfield Street, right across from our park. And so it's our first time we've had you here working on something for us, and so welcome and thank you very much for giving such a, it was an outstanding prayer, it meant so much. The words you said really reached our hearts, so thank you very much. And to the Goodyear Honor Guard for participating in tonight's ceremony. They're looking good, aren't they? So professionally and so meaningful, so let's give a round of applause for them. And now, we'd like you to join us for the little conversation and a cupcake in the lobby. So with that, with no further business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.